Okay, I'm gonna call the Wednesday, October 8th, 2025, Lompoc Planning Commission Meeting, open. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Present.
Commissioner Bridge.
Present.
Commissioner Beverly.
Present.
Commissioner Cox?
Present.
Commissioner Hurd?
Present.
Okay, and then we'll move on to oral communications. And then this is an opportunity to address items that are not on the agenda. Each speaker has three minutes maximum, and we no longer have a phone, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Well, since no one is here, we will go ahead and close oral communications and move on to the consent calendar. I'll go ahead and motion to approve the consent calendar. And then Commissioner Bridge, second. So now we'll vote. And that passes 5-0. Next, we'll move on to public hearing item number one, Architectural Design/Site Development Review for JV Automobile Service Center. Can we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. I am presenting a request from Marucio Estrada, the project applicant for a planning commission consideration for a request of Architectural Design/Site Development Review for DR 2024-0003 for JV Automotive Service Center, a new 4,750-square-foot industrial building with parking, trash enclosure, and landscaping. The proposed use of an automobile service center, vehicle sales, service-type use, repair major, is allowed in the industrial zoning district and has been analyzed and proposed, and as proposed and conditioned, the project would meet the intent and purpose of the zoning districts and the associated required development standards. The project is located at 400 East Laurel Avenue. The site is approximately 0.3 acres. The surrounding uses include residential to the north, it's right across the street of Laurel Avenue, to the east is vacant lots, more industrial, to the south is the railroad tracks and more industrial, and to the west is industrial and then residential kind of northwest. The property does front East Laurel Avenue. These are photographs of the existing conditions taken in October of 2024. The top is facing east and the bottom is facing to the south. The proposed site plan, proposed site plan, the site is undeveloped and currently has no vehicular access. The project is proposing two entrances on East Laurel Avenue. The one to the east is to the customer parking area and the trash enclosures. The entrance on the west fronts the automobile bays. The project meets the vehicle and bicycle parking requirements. There we go. The JV Automobile Service Center is a proposed 4,751-square-foot industrial building, which includes four bays with vehicle lifts, office space, reception area, and outdoor patio on the west side, indoor storage for tools, tires, and parts. The proposed hours of operation would be Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The elevation, the top elevation is what would face Laurel Avenue. The bottom is the east elevation facing D Street. The bottom right was the trash enclosure. I did leave next to Commissioner Bridge are the samples of the color boards. He didn't actually provide a small color board, so there's large samples. I left them on the dais if anybody would like to look at them. The proposed building has a modern, modern style and architectural features. The colors for the building include shades of silver, charcoal gray, and white. The architectural features include corrugated aluminum panels, stucco, and cantilevered aluminum frame canopy. And on the outdoor waiting area is a decorative aluminum trellis system. Staff review finds that the proposed project, as conditioned, is compatible with the nearby developments and substantially conforms with the city's architectural review standards. These are the proposed elevations to the south, facing the railroad tracks on the top, and to the west, facing E Street. The proposed landscaping is 3,993 square feet of new landscaping within the property. The most significant fronts Ocean Avenue and includes a landscape buffer of 13 feet 7 inches, which meets the landscape buffer requirement of 10 feet between industrial and residential uses. The, it has a variety of drought-tolerant landscaping with new trees and drip irrigation, and it complies with the minimum overall 10% landscaping coverage for the project. The project is categorically exempt from environmental review due to Section 15332 in Field Development Projects of the California Environmental Quality Act. A Development Review Board meeting was held on September 18th, 2025. The applicant was, application was circulated to various city departments for review, and each of the departments provided standard and/or specific conditions as necessary for requirements reflected in the draft conditions of approval for the proposed project. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Resolution 1022-Prendes 25, approving DR 2024-0003. Included on the dais was supplemental information. The architect, Marucio Estrada, was unable to attend the meeting tonight. So he did draft a letter, which is on the dais for you, stating that he has reviewed the staff report and the conditions of approval, and he agrees with them. I am, my staff report is complete, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Sherida. Before I see if the commission has any questions for you, I just want to let the rest of the commission know that if you'd like to speak, you'll click on the bottom right of your screen, RTS mic, and it, you will be put in a queue, and then when it's your turn, I'll click on your name, and then your mic will be on to speak. So, does anyone have any questions from Sherida? Okay. Okay, Commissioner Cox.
Proposed operation 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.?
It's not letting me click on his name. Oh, there we go.
Here we go. If he chose to stay open Saturdays later on, does that affect anything? As far as the neighbors go, of their approval or disapproval now?
He would need to come back and request permission to do so. We did, I cannot remember the condition number.
Does his approval require requesting new mailouts to the neighbors?
Say that again, sir.
If he does come in and request to stay open longer hours, do you have to re-mail all the neighbors again?
No, it would be able to be approved by the director, Condition P 70, P 57. All shop services, including working on, testing of vehicles, shall be limited to the proposed hours of operation from Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., with 30 minutes prior to and after our lab for setting up and closing. Any change to the hours of operation for shop services shall be approved by the director or their designate.
Perfect, thank you.
So it can come to Mario or?
Great, thanks.
Greg.
And then I had a clarifying question. I believe it's P 50 says no vehicles will be stored overnight in the parking lot or on the street and shall be stored onsite in the vehicle bays. So at most, they're only able to work on four cars, if they have four bays.
Not necessarily work on, but store overnight. So there, when we were first federating out the project description, I kept asking, is it a major vehicle or a minor vehicle? They kept insisting that it was minor vehicle, that, and under the minor vehicle description, and I'm sorry, I don't think I have both of those with me. There is specific language in the minor description that states no vehicles are allowed overnight. There's no tire service, there's no, it, it ends up falling more in the major category, but they kept saying that they were minor, so we were trying to put as much of that in there, and that does fit in with that language that says that there's not supposed to be vehicles stored overnight. If it's something you would like to amend, your commissioners.
Okay, so I guess, let's, let me have Commissioner Cox go. Go ahead.
Is this a new thing for new construction? Because I know a lot of service places in town, they store cars overnight all the time.
It is what is in the current code, so it may not have been part of the code when whatever other business was established.
So they're sort of grandfathered in, as you would say?
We don't like to use that term, existing nonconforming, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Got it, okay. So really then, at most, they can work on is four cars because that's as many cars they can store. Like, they can't have one that they're gonna, there's four cars in the bay, and they're gonna work on one early in the morning. They can't keep one in the parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, so if somebody can drop theirs off at 7:00 in the morning, they can still.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Bridge? There you go.
So again, on this parking conversation here, they cannot have any vehicles in there overnight, is what the condition is the city put forth?
They can have them stored in the bay. They're not supposed to be stored on their parking lot overnight.
Well, that wasn't the question, though. I asked if a vehicle was allowed to be parked overnight. I'm not storing said owner, I'm not storing my car. I'm parking my car because going to the King's Game, whatever, like, what's, where does it, is, is what the intent is, is that you don't want this to become a, a storage lot?
Of cour, no, of course, we don't want it to be a storage lot. It's supposed to be a vehicle service center, and they're supposed to be bringing in, "I'm taking my car to get my oil changed," or to get my?
I'm not arguing the logistics. I'm not questioning any part of that. I'm asking for clarification around the parking because it's a very gray area. I, I come in because it's tax season, I want to work an hour early. I can't do that? We'll go back to the business hours to start, but, oh, I went out last night and I can't park my car in there? I own this building? Like, that, it, I'd like more clarification around the intent.
Hello? Okay. As it's currently worded, it does, since it says no vehicles, we stored overnight. That means no vehicles stored overnight in, in the parking lot. So yes, if somebody wanted to just park there, the condition says you can't, as it's written.
Let's go to Commissioner Beverly here. Yes. There you go. Wait, no. Now.
All right, there we go. Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of just trying to figure this out, too. What is the distinction between overnight parking and storage? Or are we treating them, you know, congruent? Like, are we saying any parking is considered overnight storage? Is that kind of what you're getting at?
Yeah, from my understanding, the way this is written, you, you couldn't park there overnight. If you want something more clarified, then you can come up with a alternate condition that might be more clear, and we can put that into the condition.
Commissioner Bridge?
I just haven't really heard the intent with regards to the various spectrum of concerns that we can come up with going, "This seems a little bit odd," because the next step then is, I just go park on the street, and now we're kind of encouraging them to clutter the street for their neighbors, rather than they have a building, and heaven forbid, a guy parks there overnight, their employer, whatever. But I just feel like the intent is missed here if we're supposed to receive this as, "We don't want them doing it as a extension of their business, i.e. $50 a month for parking, storage, whatever it may be called." But the reality is, a customer didn't pick up their car yet, and they're, with no ill intent trying to store cars, they don't want cars there if it's not supposed to be a storage yard, right? And that's where I'm going, where's that line? And perhaps we can drive to more clarification without holding them hostage with, to use their parking lot? I, again, we can go back to the business hours because I think that's also in line with this, like, "So I came in early to do taxes, so my job ran late," like, where's the line? And when you look around the corner, you have another shop doing work and probably completely permitted seven days a week. And when we get into wine industry, which is populating the area, that's 24 hours a day, you know, in some conditions of the year, that's just what happens. So how do we obviously protect the residents, which I think is your ultimate goal? Not having this junkyard better than what it is today, but still provide them the use?
The, the large item with the hours of operation is the sound. There, that's why the, the condition is in for closing the bays, keeping the residence, a residential neighborhood for them. So the hours of operations are limited specifically for the working on the vehicles of somebody, if they need to come in and do paperwork, if they need to come in and do, like you said, they want to work on their taxes or send out their invoices. Any office work is not limited. It's only the vehicle, the working on the vehicles and creating a noise nuisance for the neighbors at 9:00 o'clock at night.
Do you have a response to her?
Yeah.
Okay, let's continue with your response, and then we'll move to Commissioner Beverly.
I think it'd be fair then to put some sort of qualifier of no heavy work or no primary work beyond these hours.
Well, I believe too that it says the work has to stay in the bay.
Well, I think they're still saying at 5:00 it ceases. And short of, well, no, they don't really mean person in the office, or, oh, we allow pickup till 6:00. They're really meaning no, no primary service work anymore.
Well, and that's what it states. "All shop services, including working on and testing of vehicles, shall be limited to the proposed hours of operation, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., 30 minutes prior to and afterward for closing up if something runs late." And then if they want to change the working on the vehicles for noise and other things like that, then they would need to request that from Mario or Greg.
Okay. Commissioner Beverly?
First off, I love this. This is part of my walk, so I really like what's going on here. Just to go back to 50 real quick, P 50, I think really the issue is the storage of inoperable vehicles versus the parking of vehicles overnight. And I think if we were to distinguish it somehow along those lines, noting that they're, you know, inoperable or in-service vehicles, because it is part of my walk, and I see a lot of other things parked all around that walk. And I'm not thinking having, you know, a couple of dudes park overnight because they had a long night is really a problem.
Is, was that enough to the, to amend the condition of?
I'm just vocalizing that to the crew right now. I don't know if I'm full-on motion on that, but I'm just feeling that that, seeing that that is kind of the hitching point, I think that could be a resolution, possibly.
Okay, well, let's hold that because we still need to open it up to public comment. Okay. Can I go to Mr. Hurd here, and then we'll open to you? Commissioner Hurd?
So I think my question is maybe more for counsel on this. Is there a legal requirement to include P 50 in this document? Could it be struck entirely? Or is that, is there a certain statute or code that states that this is the new standard?
I will confirm with Sherida. I don't believe that there is a code requirement.
I, I think because we ended up moving it to vehicle repair major, I, I think we can, it, it is under major now.
Okay.
They were telling me it was minor, and the, the actual definition of vehicle use minor in the code specifically states there shall be no vehicles stored overnight, and it does not distinguish between operable or inoperable, just says no vehicles. But since it's under major, I believe we could delete the condition.
That's what I wanted to clarify. So it, because it's, it's in the major category under the code, that would be permitted.
Okay.
You mean, excuse me, I'm sorry, you mean it would be permitted to strike P 50 from the document?
Yes, yes, sorry, that was?
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Bridge?
The only other condition here that seems slightly unfair as part of that is, without some further clarification, because I do like the idea that no inoperable, no vehicles that were multi-day work, whatever. But on the flip side of that is, if they are in fact taking a vehicle for a couple of days, it's, it's possibly likely that they have either a loaner vehicle or a service shuttle. And that seems fair enough to not make them, while be it they may want to bring it in every night, have that permitted as part of that P 50. And in terms of where I think, again, this parking versus protection of a vehicle that goes in there, is there a condition, which I didn't see, that stops them from ever adding gates all the way around? Is that built in because of the location of that? Or could they add a fence all the way around, up to seven feet tall?
I would have to check the code, but I believe that they can go a fence all the way around.
My only caution with the fence going all the way around is that there is another section of our code pertaining to sight visibility. So if a fence is too close to the driveway, it could potentially violate the sight visibility requirement of our code.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, let's go ahead and open it up to public comment. And then since we have no one here, we'll go ahead and close it. Okay. So would we like to continue with the motion with striking out Condition P 50? Okay. There is a motion?
So we're striking it? Voice it out before we go? Is this on?
No.
We're striking all vehicles being parked where they can park and have any vehicle in there?
I get.
Just checking, here we go. Yeah, I guess I would make a motion to strike P 50 from the document allowing, or amend, let's see. I'd like to make a motion to amend P 50 to include parking overnight as allowed. Is that, is that kind of close with what you?
I don't, I don't know why we'd be allowing inoperable vehicles. That's just, we're, we're trying to find a balance of business. You're making a motion, so I mean, it's, I don't want to step on the rules, cross-talk or whatever.
Can we have you repeat that, Commissioner Bridge, because your mic wasn't on?
Well, my immediate concern is that we've completely opened up the protection that they were trying to, again, where I go to the intent, which is they don't want vehicles junking up. And if it becomes that, then that's another business model that they're gonna have, whether or not they want to. And that will bring people into that area.
So we can?
And then the next step would be, let's have a gate, a big fence, and now we're in the sight line, and we've got this hole. When I think the underlying current is, how do we allow them to just use their parking lot but not abuse it? So no service vehicles, or I mean, vehicles in service can stay overnight? No vehicles being worked on in the parking lot, I assume the condition is in there, or not?
That's already there, isn't it? It has to stick to in the bay?
So that's, that was gonna be my clarification to the motion as well, was just to confirm whether you mean no vehicles that are being, no, it's okay to have a vehicle parked overnight, but it's not okay to have vehicles that are being serviced in the parking lot overnight, I think. I'm not, I want, I'm asking for clarification to make sure we get it right.
I think my personal take on it is that if they're building and they're following the rules that the other shops in town have to follow, I don't think it's appropriate to how, hold them to a different standard. So I am okay with striking it completely. That's, yeah.
Commissioner Cox, did you still have a question?
I know. No.
There you go.
Thank you. You, we're trying to go forward in time and make things better. I know the other auto body shops and everybody is grandfathered in, but I don't think we can say because they can do it, this guy can do it. Otherwise, we're never gonna move forward and, and make a better city for everybody. So I, I think we could, we could amend this by saying they have to be operable, they have to have four tires on them, and, you know, that's basically it. You can't be jacking them up out there, leave them overnight with three tires on and a jack stand under it, things like that. So if we can come up a way to say they need to be operable, they need to be the customer's car, and, and not the employee's car, his tow truck or whatever, because he's gonna interpret it that way. So we need to say it has to be the customer's car, that has to be left there overnight, that cannot be put in the bay, something like that, and then I would be for doing that, amending that. And that way, we kind of handle both ends of it without getting carried away.
Okay, so what we can do is vote on his motion. If you, if it does not pass, then you can remake a motion with your amendment.
He can amend his motion?
Well, anybody can amend a motion.
Yeah.
I, I guess I'll make the, well, we're stuck between striking and not striking. Are we on line with nobody really wants junkers there? And nobody wants this to become a storage yard if you lived across the street?
Operable customer.
I'd say even, I'd say we just say it's no, no vehicles other than their service shuttle or, you know, I don't think customers, because how long does that last?
Yeah, we should vote on the motion to strike, and then we can consider the motion to amend.
Whatever you think he wants to do. You want us to vote, right?
Vote on the motion to strikes, and then we can do a motion to amend, or the commission can do a motion to amend. That's a little bit?
It was first and second, we can?
Yeah.
Okay, so it doesn't pass. So would you like to make a new motion?
You just want them to be able to use it, right? With the strike, that's the goal. And what is, in your opinion, where is that line, like, if you lived across the street? Because I don't think, I, we don't have these rules on other auto shops, right? There's no conditions. This is the, every time we have one of these, it's a new list.
I do not believe that, it's under the code, so I don't know that any, that there are actual conditions of approval. We'd have to pull each project to look. So there might be something out there that we probably wouldn't know about until something went into code enforcement, or we needed to actually pull and, you know, pull the project file and see. I honestly do not know, I did not research when the last auto shop, new auto shop we had. It may have been when Jiffy Lube went in.
Well, they'd go in probably to a established facility, and it probably would have been a tire shop. But nonetheless, they want them, I think, as a whole. I, I say no, add something with no inoperable overnight parking. Just leave it at that, and then there's, doesn't matter where that goes, right?
If I, if I may, one, one way to word it so that you know what you're, so that it's clear, because I realize when we start amending things, I, I want to make sure everybody knows what they're voting for. And Commissioner Bridge, you worded, this is very similar to what you said a few minutes ago. You could say no vehicle. ago, you could say no vehicles receiving service will be stored overnight in the parking lot.
Well, I think that hurts some people's feelings, but I think more appropriately is to meet again the intent of what I think staff wants, which is put your vehicles inside if you're working on them. No inoperable vehicles more than 24 hours. And that just gives some latitude of like, oops, I made a mistake or something and perhaps we even add one line that says, may park up to two company vehicles, whether that be a shuttle or not. But I, I, I don't want to make this more difficult than what it is based on people wanting them to be able to use it. I just don't want junkers in this. It's, it's just such a weird line, right? We're right on the residential industrial line, so usually we have a little bit more buffer with a mixed use or something, and we don't have that in that line, do we? So, okay, well, if somebody wants to make a motion, cause I'm not very eloquent on it tonight.
Okay, so we're taking out no vehicles and we're changing it to no service vehicles can be in the parking lot for more than 24 hours?
Or inoperable, I think was the...
No inoperable vehicles?
Yeah, I would go with inoperable.
Am I not on cue there?
No.
I'm like, why am I on cue? You're on the next one. So now I'm in queue twice.
Commissioner Beverly?
Sorry, I, I thought I was in queue there. Yeah, my big thing, I understand the concept of possibly being an attractive nuisance of having some vehicles that are open to service there, so I just think no overnight parking of inoperable or in-service vehicles. And I mean, I'll be honest, we are a reactive code enforcement agency, so it may slip once or twice, but I don't see that being the end of the world, but I think that's a reasonable restriction because it promotes the safety of the area. And again, I walk this area and I see this as a great positive increase to the area, so I am going to make a motion at this time for that, if that's all right. Or did you want to say something for...
Could you repeat it one more time just so that we get it for the record?
Oh, that's what I was gonna do, yeah, oh, sorry. I, I'm making a motion that we amend P 50 to state no overnight parking of inoperable or in-service vehicles.
Okay, we will go ahead and vote. And that passes five vote. Okay, let's move on to oral communications.
Would you like to make a motion to actually approve the project?
Oh, yeah. Yes. Do you want to add that to your motion? Or I motion to approve, what is the? Does it have the architectural?
I did voice it, but I hit it two voice, this is a motion to approve the project. So I don't, I need to... There we go, I'm making a motion to approve the project.
And we'll vote on that as well. Okay. Now we'll go ahead and move to oral communications. No one is here, so we'll go ahead and close that up and then move on to written communications. It looks like there is none. There is no new business, is there any director staff communications?
I just wanted to mention that we are anticipating the circulation element to come back to planning mission on, in November, that, that's what we're anticipating. And that, that said, unless Mario has anything else.
Okay, and then any commission requests? Okay, and then I'm just gonna remind you I'll be absent for the November meeting. Okay, I will motion for an adjournment. And we'll vote. Okay, we are adjourned to the next Lumpo planning commission regular meeting at 6:30 p.m. on Wednesday, November 12th, 2025.